Cameron, with respect to our Village Place and Pinehurst South Form-Based Code documentation. Alex, are you going to speak from here? Jeff Morgan, you're hearing us? Thank you.
I am.
Good. Alex, thank you, unless Jeff Sandborn wishes to make any other introductory comments for this discussion?
No, maybe, yeah, actually, I might put in a plug for Alex here. There's a lot of detail in the documents that have been provided for this agenda item, but we are kind of just in the initial stages of this, and so what, I think what Alex is really looking for from you tonight is just a, it's an azimuth check. Are we headed in the right direction? Try not to get bogged down in the details of the language in the documents and focus on the higher level themes that it presents. Is that fair, Alex?
It is, and I'll be able to expand a little bit more. It's been a while since we've discussed this topic, and it's based on a lot of work and effort that has been put in by a joint effort with staff and the Planning and Zoning Board. So I have to acknowledge the work and the commitment that each one of those members have put in. Over the course of a month, we have had six meetings where we have went through these topics, leading up to trying to implement something within our regulatory framework so that we can make sure that this vision is carried out and this moratorium can be lifted with knowing that we have the preservation element of what development will be required or controlled to look like in these respective areas. So last we spoke with council was toward the end of January, where Darren and I both were here, and you guys had your first crack at the Village Place Form-Based Code. We've got those comments, comments have been circulated, and since then, again, staff and the Planning and Zoning Board have worked together to work through the Pinehurst South Form-Based Code. And this culminated with a public hearing by the Planning and Zoning Board on March 30th, where they officially provided a recommendation to you guys to adopt the small area plan and the Form-Based Code as part of the small area plans as an official plan. And there's a reason for that. Plans, as defined by state statute, are required for any jurisdiction that is going to have zoning regulations or development controls. This is really the comprehensive plan. However, it further defines that small area plans or other guiding plans are also, they also meet this definition, which requires following the same legislative text amendment process which we have been through numerous times: a public hearings, recommendation by Planning and Zoning Board, public hearing, and action by village council. And the reason why we're going this direction is that, again, if a favorable or general nod in the right direction with these documents, we have already been working behind the scenes as staff to draft what the text amendments and the zoning map amendments would look like in order to implement these plans. And part of that requirement is that new development or redevelopment within these areas before you establish a use or have a subdivision of land, that is going to trigger the requirement for a conditional zoning request and approval by the village. And in considering these type of legislative decisions like we just did earlier, you are to consider your adopted plan, so then that's going to be able to, these documents will then be that guide for what any developers or what development should look like, and you'll be able to consider those type of proposals against these plans. Now, that being said, there still will be specific provisions that are not allowed to be conditioned through that legislative review and are subject to the text or the zoning text, which would be uses and dimensional type criteria which will control the density cap. So we think it's important, this is a way to, I'm not going to say quickly or hastily implement, but it is a way to safeguard future development in these areas, but also allow for enough flexibility, because these standards in this document that's before you guys this evening in this work session item go above and beyond and are very prescriptive than what we have historically had in place, especially the architectural standards, and we all are aware of our limitations to impose such on development that falls under the one and two family code, which there are residential proposed land uses within both of these areas. But it gives that opportunity, it gets that negotiation or that narrative that you'll be able to discuss, and developers will know what I need to bring forth for any development proposed in these areas. And our process will require the general concept plan and the other supplemental related material that would give that expectation of what development would be like if it were proposed. Otherwise, finding a way to make these type of development requirements fit within our current text and how staff would be reviewing that or who would be charged with reviewing those type of proposals gets really messy, and we're just not, I don't think we're at that point where we can really wrestle with that. So the documents that have been given to you guys and uploaded with this agenda item reflect the changes in the work to the Village Place Form-Based Code and the Pinehurst South Form-Based Code that staff and the Planning and Zoning Board have worked through. It's structured very similar to what you've seen previously. There are sections based on the site design, which includes a regulating plan, where staff and the Planning and Zoning Board went block by block by block on the type of building types and building heights. I know there was some discussion over stories, what constitutes a story. What the proposed draft PDO amendments, which we again hope to be bringing forward to council for their consideration after we're through the Planning and Zoning Board, has a familiar requirement of a building height. So we're going to get rid of any of the type of subjectivity that could be maybe left where number of stories. And as Jeff said, there's going to be sections in this document that are maybe more visionary, but they're not a hard and fast requirement, so there's no need to really get caught up in some of those provisions, again, because this is not going to necessarily be exactly what is followed to a T. You'll see that with the text amendment, so again, which is really going to be controlled by uses and dimensional requirements: height, lot size, density, impervious surface coverage, et cetera, which is very typical. Then there's sections involving the street design. I know there was a lot of commentary back in January about the appropriate width of new streets, alleys, et cetera. Staff believes that it's sufficient. We certainly welcome any, you know, collective direction given by village council to move forward. And again, we have a very robust architectural standard within both areas and for all the building and lot types, whether it be the mixed-use commercial or whether it be single-family attached or single-family detached. The major significance between the Village Place architectural requirements and the Pinehurst South architectural requirements are that after discussion with the Planning and Zoning Board, we decided to not have stone as a permitted exterior facade material. We just didn't think it was maybe really in keeping with the pattern and the types we see in the village center, which was what the Village Place area was to resemble as close as possible. It's also worth mentioning, there's been a lot of question about live work, which was a mention type use. We've removed that reference because it's essentially the same as a mixed-use, so we're just, in order to remove any confusion, it's just mixed-use. So anywhere there was a live work that was shown in any of the approved or uses within the blocks, it's just mixed-use now, so we're trying to, again, streamline that or remove any confusion for that. I think those are really, truly, the major revisions or discussion points that we really need maybe a little bit collective consensus from village council so we can make final tweaks or adjustments to these plans, schedule a public hearing before council, and have an action on the adoption of these as plans, and then we'll be able to move forward with bringing the text and zoning map amendments to village council, again, which are under consideration right now by the Planning and Zoning Board.
As we go into this presentation, and some questions, no doubt, from members of the council, Alex, I wanted to acknowledge something that you brought to our attention at the earlier part of your comments, and that is that it's very obvious the amount of work and time that the planning department, but especially the Planning and Zoning Board, has put together and committed to this process over the last many months, especially in the last month or two when numerous additional meetings have been held, and the amount of time that the board has spent has been well-recognized. Some of us attend the planning meetings, others of us watch them or see the videos after, and it's very clear the amount of time and understanding they're putting into this project, and I'm sure as we go along at our end in working with you and the planning board, we'll come up with a good product in, hopefully, a reasonable period of time. Do you want to draw our attention to some specific pages in here tonight and maybe talk a bit about, you know, timeline from where we are today to getting through hearings and this sort of thing, at least tentatively?
Well, I could speak to a couple of those topics, as I know that council members have already done their homework on the documents themselves, and I'd be ready to start going through and getting that feedback. Timing or timeline is very important, and I know council member Bosch had mentioned in a previous work session, I had mapped out a process with Planning and Zoning Board, and it worked quite well, and I hope to be able to maybe bring forward some type of draft schedule for council, which may require an additional commitment in time, obviously. And to that point, where we sit now is we need to schedule a public hearing to adopt these as official plans. So I need the guidance from you guys on what final tweaks we may need to make to these documents, knowing that there will have to be some, what I would consider maybe minor concessions that might need to be made, or to live with something in the 90th percentile as they won't be codified in the true zoning text or zoning requirements. But we have our scheduling or notice, published notice of hearing, which is a 10 to 25-day window, so we at least need three weeks to a month before we can schedule that for village council. We can be working through the text amendment process too to come right after that. So at best-case scenario, we're two months away from adoption. The work of the Planning and Zoning Board is largely done after a formal recommendation on the text and map amendments, so it would just be staff working directly with council on what final tweaks, scheduling the public hearings, getting public comments, seeing if anything else needs to be revised based on those, and then the same with the zoning text and map amendments, which can be done same meetings.
Okay, I wonder if, I wonder if discussing the timeline in a little more detail would be best done after some questions tonight, but to be discussed tonight, when we go through this a little bit now and see what questions we have or, you know, what issues you want to bring to our attention, but obviously, the timing is something that you've got in your mind and the timeframe it'll take to set up hearings and whatnot, so we need to give some guidance on that tonight if we can. But maybe it's better we start to hear questions and get focused from you, and then come back to that timeline issue once we see how this is flowing. Would that be all right?
Yeah, after this meeting, I'll have a better idea of where that target. I'm just going to be working backwards. We know what the requirements are, so set a goal date, work backwards from that, knowing that we have the Village Place moratorium, the current moratorium will run out May 5th, I believe, and the Pinehurst South moratorium is June 5th. So we know we would-
I think June 4th, yeah.
Okay.
May 5th and June 4th are in my mind, but anyway, yeah.
And ideally, we would like to try to have something as near-to-finished product in consideration by village council before those dates, or we may run the risk of living with what our current requirements are within those existing areas, based on the zoning or the development patterns that we lay out in our PDO now.
Okay, all right. So do you want to focus us on some key parts of this or just take questions as we have?
I would just go through Village Place.
Okay.
Give me your feedback, and then we'll move to Pinehurst South.
Okay, all right. Let's do it that way. And Jeff Morgan, I'll just, I think it's easier here if we maybe just go around the room a little bit, but I'll start with you. If you have any questions yet on Village Place, we'll do that one first and then get to Pinehurst South. Are there any particular issues you'd like to raise, Jeff Morgan, at this point?
No, I'm comfortable with the direction we're going. Thank you.
Okay. Questions from other council members, then? Jane, would you like to address a few issues?
Yeah, I do have a lot of questions, and I'm cognizant of the time, but some of them are details.
Okay.
Questions about some of the definitions and so forth.
What if we did this, Jane?
But my, okay, go ahead.
Well, if we were to take a broader view, maybe the key topical areas that I think you just said you have, and maybe then the details of those, if they're not available through Alex tonight, we could have a separate meeting with Alex, with you and me, or Patrick, or Jeff Morgan, or Lydia, to go over some of those details, but maybe the overall policy would be something would be helpful.
That's good, all right.
Patrick, is that okay with you?
Yeah, I was going to say, I can go through this sort of like a, one of those old-time speed dating processes. I've gone through these several times now, so I sort of know where I want to focus, and it's very fresh in my mind, because I went through it this morning, because I picked this up last night. So I'd be glad to start on-
I think Jane was going to-
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
But I'm just saying, the idea of-
I'm fine.
Let's look at some of the key focus areas, and then if there'd be a lot of details that some of us may have, maybe we should speak individually with Alex in the days this week and next week. Be helpful, I think, to try it that way.
Okay.
So Jane, why don't you go ahead and lead off with your primary topics there? Go ahead.
I guess the biggest question I have is on density. And looking at Village Place, and I didn't try to do this for the commercial, but looking at the residential, the different kinds of residential buildings, there's single-family attached that are the smallest, then there's the cottages, which are detached but, and a little larger, manors and villas, which are respectively a little bit larger, but the largest one is the villa, and the lot size for that, minimum lot size, is 5,760 square feet. R10 surrounds Village Place to a large extent, and that's a 10,000-square-foot lot. R5, we have in some areas of the village, but, you know, again, that's quite a bit smaller. So I tried to figure out if you have, how many units per acre are we talking about for these? And if you take an acre, 43,560 square feet, and take out 15% for roads and so forth, and then divide by the minimum lot area, for the RA5 zone, you can get seven units per acre, for the R10 zone, three units per acre, and the multifamily zone, RMF, in the table of dimensional requirements says they have a maximum of six units per acre. But then you compare it to these new ones, and unless there's some other density cap somewhere which I'm missing, which there could be, there could be. For the largest of the detached buildings, detached homes, the villa, it would be about six homes per acre. For the next one down the manor, nine homes, cottage 14, but then the single-family attached, you could get 22 homes. Am I right about that? That there's such a much higher density under this than there would be under our regular zoning?
Jane, as we go along, is there a page number that you could refer to as we all look at that together with your question?
She's in section 2.3, which are the lot standards.
Right, the lot standards.
Which is typical of how single-family or residential density is carried out now. Basically, it's a math equation. How much area, what's the minimum lot size? What's the minimum area set aside for open space? Jane mentioned street network, other type of areas that will have to meet that.
It starts on page 11.
Yep. So is it more dense than what the current residential requirements we are now, based on just dimensional criteria solely? Yes, absolutely. That had been developed based on the process of the small area plan that was adopted that you guys, I'm sure you recall, where was, there was action by both Planning and Zoning Board and village council. I'll also, again, point to the regulating plan, which would be on page nine, where the single-family or the residential areas would only be allowed within two areas, and that would be blocks N and O. Block N is the area off of Rattlesnake down to Board Branch, and then block O is the Tradition Site, just down the hill here. So it's not like this type of density is being shown to be permitted, you know, in a large landmass of the planning area.
Well, this one, might be aerial rendering on page five. I realize it's a rendering, but it makes the corner of the McCaskill and Magnolia look like a multifamily complex, like a mini apartment building there. And otherwise, it's quite, it looks like the Beverly Hillbillies mansion. So I'm just pointing that out because it goes into that whole, that visual impression of density.
And too, this is where lot standards, lot size, dimension, that's the items that we need feedback on.
I'd like to see a lot lower density than that.
You guys will have to-
I really would.
You guys will have to discuss that and tell us then if this is objectionable.
Yeah.
If it's objectionable, then what? Otherwise, I'm just coming back in another two weeks and proposing a new criteria, and then maybe that doesn't work.
Well, we're going, if we're looking at single-family attached as being comparable to RMF, the difference is six units an acre versus 22. And I'm not sure why we want to do that. And the other angle of it is that so many of these blocks permit mixed-use, and mixed-use, I think, is supposed to have a residential, residential on the second floor, is that-
It doesn't have to. It does not have to have a dwelling unit as part of it. It could be a retail on the bottom and office upstairs.
So that then we've got yet more residential downtown.
Potentially.
Yeah, and I'm concerned about that degree of, I'd really like to see that reduced.
Well, Jane, let me just question you for a minute. I'm not totally opposed to some residential downtown in the mixed-use category, but I am concerned about the density of it. So I guess I'm agreeing with you.
Exactly.
But I'm not, but I just want to be clear, I can see where you could have some mixed-use, just like we have it right now in the village ourselves. There are some apartments above various businesses, and I could see some of that, but I am worried about just how dense it gets, that's all.
Yeah, I think that's very, very good concerns, and I'm not sure what the right numbers are.
Right.
But it might be helpful to look at this planning effort in the context of what's going on around us. John and I heard today a projection that the state has that Moore County's population's going to grow by 50,000 people between now and 20-
2050.
50, 2050.
Yeah.
Over 30 years. Yeah. And the county believes that the vast majority of that is going to be in Southern Moore County. So the density is coming, the numbers are coming. The question is, where is it going to be? And might, I'll just throw this out, might we all be better off to accommodate some density so that we aren't accommodating sprawl?
Sorry, Jeff, not accommodating?
Sprawl.
Sprawl, okay.
And then the second point I would make with regard to the context we're working in right now is, we're all very aware, we're going to have a little conversation about this later on tonight, about the intense interest there is across the state and in the General Assembly for local governments to accommodate workforce housing. To some degree, that's achieved through accommodating density. So we all play a part in trying to do the right thing by our employers and the people that live in Moore County, and I think it's something to consider.
Yeah, I do think, if I recall correctly, I think I read it in the pilot, that the, there's been a couple of recent proposals in downtown Southern Pines that I think the town council there rejected because of their density. So this is this push-pull issue, is they, that's why I'm saying-
We're all saying, we're all saying, not here.
That's why I'm saying, I'm not opposed to some mixed-use. I think they're just, we've got to figure out where's the ceiling on that.
Yeah.
Regardless of how many, what are the projections are for a lot of things? You know, we live in communities where residents also have some expectations of the community they live in.
Yeah.
And based on some, again, recent decisions made in our neighboring community, they hit their threshold and said no to a couple of things, so.
I think some is good and more can be worse.
Yeah, there's a right balance somewhere. I don't know what it is, but-
No, you make, you make good points.
And that's a good point, that what is that balance or that, so with the approach that we're going to be able to move forward, once direction on these documents, is that they're going to have to go through a legislative process. So you'll have that ability to have those conversations. If you think a development comes through, even though it meets the minimum maybe lot dimensions, it's not appropriate here because of A. So then there's that ability to revise that conceptual design and conceptual plan, that it be less dense, and then you, the village would be more open to approving it. Again, it would follow that legislative process. The only thing that you really cannot do is condition uses in that are not already permitted. You can even restrict uses further. So you'll have that ability.
I'd like to see the density.
That's a key point in your mind, Jane, density overall.
It's very key. And tied to that, my second question has to do with open space, and this I asked about last time, too. On page 32 of the Village Place Plan, it talks about open space, and it says that 8% of, a minimum 8% of each lot is to be set aside as open space to be accessible to the public, whether the open space is publicly or privately owned.
Yes, I caught that.
But does that mean, first of all, what does that mean for these homes? Is that only for commercial, or is that for residential as well? And does that, does that come out of the initial tract? For example, block O, my understanding is it's basically one big tract right now, undeveloped. Would they have to set aside 8% of their land to make some kind of a park that would be open to the public?
It would work the same way our current standards are. We have the open space subdivision standards, kind of like the conservation subdivision- We have the open space subdivision standards, kind of like the conservation subdivisions, right? Where you have to set aside a minimum amount of open space per development. So whatever the bounds of that development is, that's your total amount of area. The, to be used by the public, or that language isn't necessary. I don't know how we could, what we're effectively doing by mandating that it be open to the public when it's on that, on a private residential area, you're inviting people over there, that language could easily be stricken. But it's basically, it's just a way that, and again, you'll refer back to your guiding plan. So you'll go back to the adopted plan where it showed, here's some potential areas where preserving some net open space, maybe it's a vision corridor with the new street network. In the Pioneer South area, it's maybe there in the, where that core area in Pioneer South, where there could be maybe an event space, et cetera. So you'll have that ability to go back. And of course, there's going to be site conditions or constraints based on what the development actually, once the hard design gets through, that, you know, warrants what, this better meets the intent of providing open space, where it's a contiguous area, where it's, you know, or it's maybe used as a potential buffer between a couple of different land uses. So to be used by the public, that, I don't like that language. But there again, it just, aside from that, it just works just like we currently do now. You have XYZ amount of land area you're proposing development, at least eight percent. And I don't know where the number eight came from. But that has to be set aside. And then we'll be able to look at a development, look at the vision that was part of the small area plan and say, this is an appropriate area for that. Or maybe it's not, maybe this is the most appropriate area early out for that.
Okay, so in our current PDO, if a developer putting together a subdivision sets aside the open space, that means they can have smaller lot size than would have been ordinarily required in the zone. So if you're in the R30, you put it, do your set aside, all of a sudden now you can have 24,000 square feet rather than lots instead of 30,000. So is that going to happen with this?
That this would be the, this would be the dimensional criteria. If this is, if this is adopted, this would be the dimensional criteria that you would have to hit.
So the lots would not get smaller just because you set aside the eight percent? Okay. Okay. I'm not liking the parallel parking. I'm not liking the parallel parking. And I'm wondering if there's going to be adequate parking in the residential areas because they're not going to have new parking lots. There's going to be new parking lots in the commercial areas, you know, and less parking attached to a particular building. But in the residential areas, you're just going to have your one little garage that you have to, you know, jimmy yourself into in the back. And then on the streets, nothing but, but parallel parking. I'm wondering if there's going to be, if that's going to be adequate, you know, or?
Don't we have a formula?
Not common across the United States, though? I mean, you see that everywhere, everywhere you go in urban areas. You know, I'm thinking about in downtown settings, but where you have, you know, row houses or what, not row houses, but, you know, typical downtown block. You got, you got home, 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 home. They might have a driveway, they may or may not have a garage, but there's parallel parking out front, and that's, it seems to work fine.
Or there's an alley in the back where people, they have garage units in the back, the more older neighborhoods. But do we not have some sort of standardized formula regarding that when we get to the residential area? Is it two? Okay, that's what I was looking for, there's numbers two.
Well, that-
Minimum.
Minimum, two, okay.
Yeah, I just kind of think it's a little bit packed in. And if the roads were wider, you could then put diagonal parking, and I think that would probably give you more parking spaces. I'm just going to say, well, up, up there at this point.
I'll say this, I don't-
So just density, open space, parking, those are three.
And the way they work together, yeah.
Okay, and how they work together, okay. Patrick?
Yes, I don't recall seeing many diagonal parking in front of homes. Okay, I'm just searching my memory, it probably is somewhere around. But those are, in homes, those are traditional parallel parking.
But these aren't going to be traditional.
But in, but in commercial, it's the opposite. I tend to see more diagonal and less the other way. So just a comment, okay. All righty. Here we go. On C, when you flip the page. By the way, it's good, good to you have added Catherine and Maria's names here. I'm catching every little thing you did, very, very good. They deserve to be recognized. Both Jane and I last time, and I think, I can't recall for sure if Lydia and Dr. Morgan weighed in, but we focused a little bit on the page C and what is a form-based code?
I'm sorry, Patrick, what page is?
Page C, when you flip the first page over.
Yeah.
What is a form-based code?
Right.
And I thought we had generally felt that, and it was Jane who found this paragraph, that the paragraph on the bottom of page four, which is still there, that the FBC is specifically prepared to ensure blah, 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 was much more-
Better.
Precise and succinct than sort of the, the way it's written here. And so I'm coming back to that because I still, I still agree with that. And I think it's just a much better, plain speaking-
We intend to fix that.
Thank you, that's all I need to know.
Next.
Because I think that's what residents will look at when they read that.
Yeah.
Okay. Let me see what else, okay. So we're going through this speed dating, really. I mentioned the, I mentioned that. I mentioned the aerial rendering, where it looks like we've got a big multifamily setup there. So that, again, I'm thinking of the public, that their eyes will focus on that. They're going to look at this, it's a very nice drawing. They're going to look at where they think things are, and they're going to say, wow, that looks like an apartment building there, I thought they weren't going to do that. So I mentioned that corner of Magnolia and McCaskill. Let me go forward.
Your point there, Pat, is what? It looks too busy?
It looks like an apartment complex.
Looks like a series of apartments.
Or that one corner looks very much like a, it doesn't look like a single family.
And you may recall that-
I understand it's a rendering.
And we have no way to adjust it.
I don't, I see what magic you can work, but I just think it's going to be caught by a lot of eyes. Well, I think we've already addressed this whole idea of the rear-loaded, cottage rear-loaded. It sort of goes to your density issue, right? Yeah, I don't care, I get it. I want to compliment you for, and you did drop out all that live-work stuff. And you, page 11, you added the mixed-use commercial rear-loaded lots. You got more, more specific, and it was reflective of the discussion we had. So thank you for doing that. You did that also on page, these page numbers are on the inside, page 13. Live-work was deleted, and it was replaced with the single-family attached rear-loaded lots. Under building height, you keep using the phrase C-regulating-plan. Is that specific enough, or should it say, whatever that number is we work with, 50? What's the number, 35?
So that language is going to be in the actual PDO text. So that will be more specific. So yes, I think, I think this suffices, because it's going to revert back to the regulating plan, which will say stories.
Okay, fine with me. No, I'm, I'm fine.
And feet, right? It's going to say feet?
Yes, basically, two stories is going to say 35, of the three will be maximum of 50.
Another visual, I know I mentioned this last time, I think several of us did. Page 17, the diagram with the four-story building. It's going to, that's going to be one compressed 50-foot building. So I encourage you to see if there's something you can do there, because you'll get asked.
Well, Pat, how do you mean that? Something to do there, what?
Well, I mean, I think it shouldn't reflect a fourth story.
Or the-
The diagram there, it has, it has an artist conception or rendering, whatever you want to call it, of four stories.
Yeah, that's four stories.
And we mentioned that last time.
Yes, you did, I remember that, okay. But it's not in 17, is it?
Now, it's on this page 7, hold on, let me see, it's on this page 17.
Okay.
The new one.
Yeah.
The page 20.
Can we go back to the four stories thing, though? I mean, wait, I think that's subject to interpretation. Somebody might interpret that to be the four-story building. But going back to, this is why Alex changed the requirement from stories to building height.
I get that.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just saying, the visual-
Yeah.
That's all, maybe, maybe what you can do is put an asterix and say, no higher than 50 feet or something. That would end the discussion, that would shut down people thinking it's going beyond that.
Yeah.
Subject to the-
That's a good suggestion.
All right, I'm just, part of what I'm trying to do here is, you're going to go to the public, and they're going to, they're going to be, I think they're going to be very engaged in this. And I'm trying to minimize questions that we can minimize. I'm on to page 20. Under general provisions, we had the discussion, you mentioned it a little bit, Alex, about this, the alley and the shared driveway and the curb and the 10-foot minimum, or something else, right now it says 10-foot minimum. Is that a term of standard operating procedure of the 10-foot minimum in an alley? Shared driveway curb area?
We feel it's sufficient.
You feel it's sufficient?
And in other areas where it's required, it may be expanded to 20 feet to meet emergency access.
Okay, the issue that flew through my mind was one of delivery trucks and all, and alleys. That's the only, that was jumped out at me, is that the right amount of size?
They'll certainly fit.
They will?
Yeah.
Okay.
Trash cans and kids on bikes and-
I understand, but if you're telling me they'll certainly fit-
That's up to the property owner to manage that, right? So let's leave personal property requirements up to personal property owners.
You want them to have enough room. You want them to have enough room for all that stuff. I mean, I think if we, if we miniaturize-
But it's their property.
But if we miniaturize this too much, it's going to be-
Your point, Jane, is it might be, it might be too difficult-
Yeah.
-to have the amount of interior space or storage space or whatever else in reality to what we, what we-
But conversely, some places may not have a need or desire or requirement to put garbage cans or other things in that alley. And so why do we necessarily have to have all that additional impervious surface just because we-
Well, because-
Because we want to micromanage. You know, this is what-
I suppose it can read, Jeff, as a minimum. What if we would say as a minimum of 10 feet?
And that's the implied without it being-
Because that would, that would-
Right, yeah.
I think it addresses what you're saying.
Yeah.
And I think it, you know, hits a little bit on what you're at and what I raise. I ask you to think about that. Again, sometimes the wording will help ameliorate some of these sort of issues that people are going to-
Yeah.
-be doing slide rule stuff with. All right. Next item I had, and I made a couple of notes of it. We discussed the issue of, when I raise it in particular concern, of Rattlesnake and McCaskill, of the requiring of utilities in the commercial areas placed underground. And I went down Rattlesnake, I counted 20 telephone or utility poles, go on the west side and 10 on the east side. And as I look at the drawings, I see that we're planning commercial or thinking about commercial along that side. And I see it as a golden opportunity to clean up that, from a safety and a visual standpoint, of requiring the utilities there. And I know you guys said you're going to look into what we can and can't do. I don't know if you've made any headway, but if you had, I really think it would be helpful to have it in this plan.
I thought that we reached a conclusion that state law does not allow us to require burial of utilities that are already in place.
Can you check on that?
So, so my reading of the statute is that you have that ability to require that they be relocated underground for non-residential uses.
Right, non-residential.
Okay. Period. For residential uses where they're already existing overhead, you cannot.
But for commercial, we can.
Correct.
So to your point on Rattlesnake.
That's my point.
Yeah.
And my, my suggestion is, we already have that in place in our PDO for our subdivision standards.
I know that.
So what we should, what we should do is we should codify that in our site design standards holistically through the village and not focus on that necessarily with these plans.
Okay, I'm fine where you can put it. If there can be a reference, though, that it's going to be in that site division, I think it's fair, again, to give a little heads-up notice, I do think there's some citizens that are going to, if you look down that Rattlesnake and you're picturing some nice commercial development down there, it's a spoiled view. And we talk about that, some of us, as that becoming a gateway, a new sort of gateway. I don't particularly subscribe to that theory, but there will be people driving down Rattlesnake Trail that eventually will be coming over here to, to that new development. So we should make it as attractive as we can. So I ask for-
And I think there's some possibility, at least working with developers, to cooperate, even if they're not mandated to do that, to at least help, help with that.
I believe developers are trying to have the most good-looking final product they want.
Yeah.
And I, so I don't think it's going to be one of these-
Be in their best interest, probably.
You know, you get the Heisman from them because the, we don't want to do that. Okay, next, I'm on to page-
What section is it, Pat? Page numbers?
Page 21, section 3.0, street design.
Yeah.
Something that jumped out at me, it looks like we have paved spur road in this. So I'm just going to tell you, there will probably be people who will wonder if that road's going to be paved. Because that, now, maybe we're not paving it, but it sure, it looks a solid line on it.
Doesn't it just say it's an existing street?
Existing street, yes.
It is an existing street, but it's not a paved street.
The legend doesn't say paved.
No, it doesn't, but I was jumping around, I was jumping to the conclusion that every road we have there is, that solid blue is paved. Now, if I'm, I'm just telling you, the people who back onto that road will likely ask that question. I've had two questions about it in the last year.
There's your answer.
Okay. Again, I'm a bit of a messenger on this.
It just says it's existing.
Let's go on. The next page, this goes back to the 10 versus 12 for the travel lanes. And I think there's the whole addition of delivery trucks and all that. That's something to be worked out, but I will skip that. I'm fine with that, keep going here. I want to get through this quickly for you. No, let's see, I'm on to page 26. I just mentioned, notice in all the artist conception, there are no utility, there are no utility poles, just the good drawings there anyway. Then, hold on. Streetlights, no, I'm fine with that, because that's, my question there had to do with the utility thing. You already had the discussion about this open space, eight percent. And so I think I now understand it, and, fine, I'll see whatever else you come up with on that, Jane. This, I call it the eight percent rule. And, there you go, time's up for my speed dating. Thank you, I have attended almost all the Planning and Zoning Board meetings that have discussed this, and I've watched the ones that haven't. I learned a great deal. There's been a lot of serious effort of people. They've asked a lot of questions that I wouldn't have thought of. And so I, I'm hoping when it goes to the community- And so I, I, I'm hoping when it goes to the community, um, they'll, it'll be in, I don't want to say the word easy, but it will not be a complex document. And if we can think about that, the audience for this, aside from the folks who are probably eventually gonna do some development, are our residents who are wondering, what are you doing to me? What's going on? And so just think about that as you pick words and diagrams and all that. Thank you.
And, and it does, it does go to mention, again, all the work, you know, you know, ever since, I would say, probably going on at least six months now. Any of these revisions that staff have tried to make to this document based on feedback from planning zoning board or feedback or direction by village council or items that we've noticed. It is, it is more difficult than it seems on the surface to edit this document. We don't have the source document. So, and that's where, if, if we, if we could easily swap out images, if we could easily make some of these, just going back and changing page references when we took out live work, probably took three to four hours of staff time. Just, just a, a minimal change like that.
That's right. An asterix, an asterix may work in some places.
I'll ask for as much grace as possible.
But no.
Yeah. Um, it just also just occurred to me, there's this, you know, this concern about alley widths and things like that. It might also be helpful to remember that the conditional district framework will allow you to.
Right.
Engage the applicants on those questions about whether or not 10-foot is actually appropriate based on their needs.
And, and it may take, it may take that analysis and a, and a design plan for you to be able to review and, and look at based on other site conditions before you. Because, again, someone who is serious about proposing development, if all this is adopted by the village, is gonna have to put forth one heck of an expenditure of time, effort, and money to, to hire professionals to, to create a, at a minimum, a general concept plan, and then there gets the discussion.
But if we put in here that our minimum is 10 feet, they're gonna want 10 feet. I, 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 and we're, what are we gonna say? Well, no, we don't want you to have 10 feet, you have to have 12 feet. I, I think 10 feet, 10, 10 feet in width.
Like, like we always do with conditional districts, Jane, you can say, we're not gonna approve, we'll, we'll approve this if it has a, if it has a condition that your minimum lot, your minimum alley width is gonna be 12 feet.
Why do we put the 10 feet in in the first place?
Because some, you might find that in some cases it's actually appropriate. 10 feet is plenty of room to drive a delivery truck through.
10 feet is the, is the width of an ordinary parking space.
10 feet is plenty of room to drive a delivery truck through.
Is it, Jeff?
I want to add the word minimum. That's why I want to add the word.
A delivery truck, average-sized delivery truck.
Yeah.
You think of it.
The kind that are stacked up on Chinkaman Road every day from 8:00 AM to noon.
Probably closer to 8 feet, not including mirrors. But, but that's, I mean, mirrors are, that's a whole separate thing, so.
It's, it's.
Yeah.
My garage doors are 8 feet wide. I do not have a big car. I have a medium-sized car, and I can hardly get the Mickey Mouse ears through. It, it's no kidding. So.
Conditional zoning helps on that, but it is, there is a little issue of.
10 feet is unnecessarily narrow. Um, and I think it's asking for trouble. And on the 8, 8% for open space, if that's sort of like the set-aside thing for subdivisions that we have now. What are, what are the percentages that we have in our current PDO for those set-asides? Is it 8% or is it a different number? Is it different for every zone?
It, it, it is different based, well, we don't have a standard for non-residential subdivisions. So it's only for our single family. I, I don't even think it applies to the multifamily zoning district, um, but I believe it's 15%.
It's?
15%.
So can we do 15% instead of 8?
If that's what council would like.
That's a big jump, what, what is the impact of that?
What's that based on?
Or open space?
What did the doctor say?
What's that based on? Now, you, we're having a conversation here about 10 feet, 8 feet, 15 feet, uh, and, and there's a standard out there. Jeff just talked about delivery truck go through a 10 feet. So if we're gonna have a minimum standard on there, let's, let's go with what, what's usually acceptable standard. We're talking about, and, and an acceptable standard is not, you got a smaller car and you can't fit through an 8, 8-foot garage. That, that's not how it's written out there. Uh, so you're not talking about these things, let's use accepted standards of what goes on and, and be reasonable. We've talked about density. So how dense, what, how dense is 2-dense? And again, what's it based on? Is it based on just my gestalt, but, you know, we're asking, we're asking for some information here, uh, from Alex and from the rest of the staff. What's it gonna be?
Right, I provided the density, um, standards that we have in our current zoning. So in the R5 zone, you get 7, if you take out 15% for streets and so forth, then you would be able to put about 7 units on an acre. And in the R10 zone, which is the zone that surrounds, um, Village Place and surrounds the elementary school and so forth. That would yield about 3 units per acre. And the RMF zone, the multifamily zone that we currently have, puts a cap of 6 units per acre.
Jane, what's that based on?
Sorry?
What is that based on?
Well, it, it's based on math, except for the RMF, which is.
I got the math, but, but there's an end result of the math equation, the result. But what is the result based on?
Jeff, are you, are you asking, what are we basing?
Well, what, okay, density, how dense is 2-dense? All right, we, we've got a standard that's there. I hear what Jane's talking about, but that's also something that's been there for long. Basically, historically, that's what we have done. We're talking about new form-based codes here. We're supposed to give you some guidance as to what the density is supposed to be, limit on it. I want to know what we're basing on.
I, I think that, it's a good question. So you're referencing R5 and R10 and, but we're talking about an area that we're trying, where we're trying to replicate our downtown, not the area surrounding our downtown. And so I think we have to ask ourselves, is R5 and R10 the right metric, or should we be looking at something else? I, I don't know what, we don't have the comparable zoning in our repertoire right now, so.
Thank you, Jeff, you're going down the direction I'm heading, okay? I, I want to know why we're basing it on this. Just because we historically have had something, does not mean that that's what we need to do. So we need to question that. And so we need to identify what, what the density is that we're looking for, and what is 2-dense. Um, again, we're talking about what the standards are here for, for alley widths. I want to know why we're basing it on 10 feet. And then when you talk about a standard delivery truck, that makes sense to me. If we got other places in the state that are basing it on the 10 feet because of that, that makes sense to me, um, as a standard. Um, and, and we'll go for that. This also goes to the parallel parking question. Okay, why, why do we want parallel parking? Why do we want, uh, angle parking? I certainly understand there's more, there's more cars that can get in angle parking, but it's also a use of space. And, um, and we've got lots of places that have residential that parallel park in that Patrick mentioned, okay? What standard are we looking at it, and how are we gonna base that? Um, you know, I, I'll throw a couple of things here that I just got the floor, they, and, and I understand Patrick looked at those pictures, we talked before about those fourth-story idea that was, they were dormers. And so there's a question on that. And that leads me into the, the last aspect on this, is that, um, we just said this is not, we don't want this to be a complex document. So in that, we cannot answer every question in the document itself. I have no problem making it as streamlined as possible, but when people are asking questions, let's answer them. Give clarity that way. It's not gonna cover every single question. We, we, we still have to move forward, it will not be a perfect document. And this is not the final aspect either. There, there's, we were just talking about this, that now you're gonna have a follow-on, uh, document that's gonna be created from it. That's all I got.
I think, Jeff, Morgan, to your point too, um, on standards, DOT must have some standards for the width of roads, depending on what kind of traffic is on those. I assume that that's how it bases some of these measurements, but I, I don't know, so maybe that's a follow-up point.
That, that is what I would assume also.
And, and we have current standards too, and, and our engineering standards and specifications manual for, for these type, which is pretty standard. All the, all the dimensions that, that are proposed or that we have, they're, they're, they're standard. And, and again, they are a minimum requirement.
They're a minimum requirement, but they are a standard. So you're gonna confirm that against our technical, what'd be the technical, um, technical standards of the village?
I, I, I can, but I don't, I mean, if, if it, if it says.
I was just looking for some basis, as Dr. Morgan's talking, what's the basis of this measurement or that measurement? In the case of road width, there must be some.
Yeah.
DOT or other standard, even in our own.
And, and it's based on the different types of, of streets or what they're serving.
All right, well.
And then there's, I mean, there's, there's what our, our standards currently require, and then there's what's already in existence in the Village of Piners, Piners as well. And I, I tell you, I haven't formally measured the travel lanes on a lot of streets over the last couple of months, our residential streets. And many of them are no more than 10 feet.
I, I, my answer to that, though, is, when it comes to streets and the planning of the width and parking and this sort of thing, we want to retain the look of the existing village, but not necessarily some of the dimensions, like streets that are very narrow compared to what we would want today.
Hey, I mean, I mean, I mean, there, there are times when a, a wide load goes down the street and people accommodating one another and it's not a problem, right? It, it, it would be the same thing here. It's 10 feet accommodates.
Now, why does the Linden Road travelway?
Not very.
No, it isn't. And, and you get trucks on that.
10 or 11 feet. But, well, the road is, but the actual measured vehicle lanes are less than that. Yeah.
Well, and I would say that's probably a little narrow for the volume of traffic on it today, but on the other hand, we should live with that, because I don't want to see the look of the road change by taking down a lot of trees. However, in something new, which these plans are.
But this, we're talking about a downtown environment where.
In Village Place.
Slides are lower and, you know, so.
All right, well, we'll come back to that point, but I, but this, but I, I do think that, um, the basis for these 10-foot roads, let's make sure we, we have that right. If, if it's in our standards, fine, if it's not, I guess it must be, then let's look at that. Because, as Dr. Morgan says, let's answer the question with some fact from our own, um, standards manuals that would recommend what we need to do. Be the basis for that. Density of lots and whatnot gets into a lot of other calculations, but that.
And that was just specific to, to the, to the width of the alleys, because I can tell you that our current street requirements are, are what is shown. You know, the, the 24-feet back of curb, back of curb with a affirmative head knob by Jeff Batten back there.
He's shrugging his shoulders, I don't think he's got, all right.
So you're saying these requirements are consistent with our current design standards?
The only one I'm not 100% sure on is if we have a standard for an alley.
Alleyway, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Thanks.
Now, um, we got our way through Village Place, then. Are there other questions on Village Place? I think, Jane, you hit your key points. Some of these we're gonna follow up on.
Details, but maybe now's not the hour.
No, I think, well, I think details of some of these subjectories earlier, I think staff would be available to discuss those through.
Right.
And I'd be happy to join in that, another council member as well, for information purposes. That work, Alex?
Yeah, absolutely. So from, from what I heard from the discussions on Village Place specifically, there's a lot of tweaks or confirmations that I, I can make based on those comments, but we're gonna keep coming back to this, this density or this dimensional criteria, otherwise we're not, we're not moving anywhere. So I, I'm going to have to have some sort of, I need some consensus from council on what that should be if this is not what, what council wants to see adopted in these plans.
Are you dealing with the issue of density only, or are you?
It's, it's the, it's the lot dimensions, which is gonna control that density.
Lot dimensions.
I think, Alex, what you're saying is, if, if, if the council wants this changed and in the interest of time, we, you need to tell us now that you want it, something.
From where it is.
Lesser density, yeah.
I, I want lesser density.
But what does that mean, from, from where to where? Help me understand where we're going. I mean, I'm, I'm a low-density guy, but I just want to know where we're going, you know?
I, I think, I think the idea.
Is there a page, Alex, you can direct me to?
Yeah, so go to section 2.3, that's where it talks about your lot types, and it goes from the mixed-use commercial to the single-family attached to the single-family detached. It's got the minimum lot width, minimum lot depth.
I, I think that the, the.
It starts on page 11.
Page 11.
The one that, um, concerns me the most is the, uh, single-family attached, which works out to something like 22 units an acre.
Could go just there.
And that, that just seems very extreme to me.
Focus on that one?
I don't know, sorry?
Focus on that one?
Well, we can, yeah, start with that one. I, I don't know whether it's possible to take the 8% open space and increase that and thereby reduce the number of units per acre that way.
That's an option?
Yep, also, if you made the roads wider, you'd come up with.
But you create more impervious that way.
I don't think you would, because, because if you, if you really cover the entire acre with, with the building, it's the same thing.
And, and there will be maximum impervious surface coverage, uh, per lot as well?
There is there, those maximum service, excuse me, maximum impervious coverage per lot or per tract?
Be per lot, on top of the requirements.
So if you have a zillion lots, then you're gonna get more impervious.
They will be capped. There will still be a cap, just like we have now.
On impervious coverage?
Correct.
But, but not on density? And I, and I think, I think.
They all, they all control the density, just like we do now. There's, you, you, you control it by setbacks, you control it by impervious surface, you control it by building height, you control it by, um, lot sizes.
Let's take lot sizes, that's your basic, your basic density thing. And 22 units compared to 6 units is a whole lot more density. And when I'm talking about density, I'm talking about population numbers.
That's a very wide variance, 6 to 22.
Yeah.
Now, what we, maybe there's a medium in there or something, but that's a very wide variance. Alex, what, what's your thought about that?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm willing to go with a 14 even on the cottage, but 22, yikes a rama.
Alex, a single-family attached is where you have, I mean, there, there, you know, it's one building that has multi, multiple single-family homes in it, right? How do you, I'm trying to understand the, the lot dimensions here. You have minimum lot width of 22 feet.
And, and the house is 22 feet as well.
So, or what, what, so along those lines, when that, does that 22 feet really just mean the footprint of each individual home?
Think of it like a townhome.
Yeah.
Yeah, there'd be party walls.
Yeah, so is that 22 feet the minimum width of a home?
Essentially, it will be, yes.
That's the width of the home.
Right, yeah. Again, minimum, yeah.
Yeah, so that's not the actual width of a lot that can have a single-family development on it?
Yes, it is.
Yes. Yeah, 22 feet.
Width of a home.
I thought it's the home versus the lot.
That's right.
And I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what I.
No.
Right on the page here, it says lot width 22, building width 22.
Yes.
Minimum.
No, the one I'm, well, maybe I'm on a different page, but I see, I, I'm on page, um, well, 14, where it says.
I think it's 12 and 13.
Well, it says the, okay, there's different ones. The lot width on page 14 is 34 feet, and the building width is 22. The lot on the.
That's the cottage.
Earlier page, it's 22 for the lot width and it's 22 for the building width.
The same thing.
Right, so that, so that the house extends across the entire width of the lot.
It's a zero-lot-line lot.
Yes, I was gonna say, it's a zero-lot line, in fact, it's attached, so it's like a row house.
It's surrounded by green space, or, or the next adjacent building, or.
Correct.
Right, so we may need you to clarify.
Okay.
And, and if, and, you know, another way to, is to, within our table, within the, the future. And, you know, another way it is to, within our table, within the future table to be developed by this, we put a.
Put a cap.
On just a single-family attached, like we have now, number, maximum number of units per acre. But there again, we're going to be at the point of, what is that number? You said, Jane, I think you threw out 14.
Cottage is 14, you know, and I mean, that was very unscientific on my part, but I think if it matched the cottage, I'd feel less bad than if it was double the cottage, which is.
And that's an asterisk that we could put in, and then we can codify that in the Table of Dimensional Requirements that will come with these type units, if that's what council would like to agree.
That's the solution, yeah.
As a rough order of magnitude, these minimum building width and depths that are described here.
Yeah.
If that was a single-story, single-family attached unit, it'd be about 750 square feet. If it was a two-story, then it'd be roughly double that, which is.
Yep.
So the point, the point, though, is that when you're dealing with single-family attached, they're necessarily.
Right.
So if that is a minimum, if that, if that minimum size is what we think is kind of appropriate, then the density should be appropriate.
Well, then, why, why is RMF limited to six?
Because we're calling it single-family attached. If we're saying it's allowed, then.
But why, how do we come up with a six-unit-per-acre cap for RMF?
I don't know. Is that right? Going back to Jeff's earlier point, what, I'm just trying to put some math behind this, but.
Yeah.
And too, because our current requirements apply broadly to all areas on RMF. Through this process, we're able to specifically look at.
Yeah.
These two areas, and through the 2019 Comprehensive Plan, through the Small Area Plan process, you know, the comments that we had heard and what had been developed based on that was, you know, more connectivity, more walkability, maybe some varying housing types, or more allowances. And then we can specifically have these areas tabbed for that. Again, we're talking about two blocks in the Village Place area.
Yeah, but there's a lot of it in Village Pinehurst South as well.
We'll get there.
Yeah.
So we need to be thinking.
Excuse me, excuse me, Jeff Morgan, go ahead. I know you're trying to speak. Go ahead, Jeff Morgan.
Yeah, the comp plan described residents wanting different housing options. You've got different types of residents, you've got some older folks, younger folks. Not everybody wants a individual home, you know, with a yard, and we're trying to accommodate that. The Planning and Zoning Board went through this to look at different things, that they have analyzed the different aspects to it and have come up with this. And this density that we're seeing here accommodates the comp plan that's on there. And what I'm, I've got no problem, you know, look at it from a common sense perspective, there's a fit or not fit and things like that, and I think that's certainly our role. But I want us to make sure that we're avoiding just this gestalt saying, wow, that seems like a lot, or wow, that seems like a little bit, and not basing this on some sort of standard. We've got a small amount of area that we're talking about here. It coincides with an overall plan that goes on, and it's been vetted through the Planning and Zoning Board also. So again, I don't personally have an issue with what this is saying right now, and I do not support saying, let's just drop it 14 units, or drop it to 12 units, or whatever the case is. I think we need to move forward with what we have at this point in time.
Well, what was, what was the 22 based on?
Just the vision, based on that whole Small Area Plan process.
Okay, so nobody's, nobody's made that analysis.
Is that density that much different than what we have currently in our downtown area?
I guess. I'm not sure if this will answer your question or not, Jane, but it comes back to, if we're talking about single-family attached, and what do we think is an appropriate minimum home size in a single-family attached environment? We require a minimum of two stories, right? So we're talking about homes that are in the ballpark of 1,500 square feet. I think in a downtown environment, in a single-family attached, that sounds pretty generous compared to a lot of other places. So if we're going to allow a single-family attached, we can't, you can't get, you can't get around that density thing by changing these lot size requirements, because these lot size requirements correspond to the size of the actual home.
Well, then, let's, let's adjust the amount of open space. If you're going to have these homes, which don't have any green space around them to speak of, then there should be common green space and more than 8%.
That seems fair. I mean, yeah.
I can see that.
Green space is going to be out in front of these homes.
What's the impervious surface requirement?
What we've drafted in the proposed table that would follow this would be 70% for the residential units and 90% for the commercial.
15%.
This is multifamily, though? Is this, is this commercial?
This would be the 70%.
This is 70. So you have 40% open space in this?
Per lot. So that would, based, you would get that from the, from the lot depth.
So not for the attached homes, then?
What's that? I'm sorry.
Not from the single-family attached, you're not getting that 40%?
70.
70%.
Yeah.
Well, you take a look at, you take a look at the renderings here on page 13, and it looks, you know, from the renderings, as though each of these house footprints has sort of got a lot of green space around it, but that's not really the case, because they're going to be lined up, chock-a-block-one against each other. So there's going to be the little, little green area in the front where you walk down the steps and out to the sidewalk, and then there's going to be this area that's 15 feet between the back of the garage and the back of the house, but, but it will be surround, it's going to be a courtyard. There's going to be, you know, houses all around it. You can't, you can't get there except by going through the garage door, anyway, and then, and then out the garage door at the back. There's, there is, you know.
You can't get there.
Well, you can't.
Clearly, you can walk around it, right?
You can't walk around the building, is what I'm trying to say, because it's going to be, it's going to be.
If it's zero-lot line, but this doesn't show that. This doesn't show zero-lot line, because it's got green space around the house.
Right. That's just for the mid.
It's not a zero-lot line specifically.
That's just for the mid-units, too. That's not going to be the, for the, for the corner units.
Houses are all going to be lined up right against each other with party walls, and same with the garage.
This is not attached, this is detached.
On page 13, I'm looking at.
This is detached on that page.
Attached as well.
It's attached. Page 13.
Well, I see. It says, it says, "Single-family detached" underneath the photo, if we're looking at the same page.
Where does it say that?
It says it under my, under the photo on page 13, bottom right-hand photo. Now, I will say this, they look attached to me.
Yes, the photos say detached, but up in the upper-left corner, "Single-family attached, SFA, rear-loaded lots."
Right.
I'm seeing everything say, says, "Single-family detached" in mine.
Go back one page, Jeff.
Well, on page 14.
Oh, you said 14.
Page 14 is different. Page 14 is the cottages, which are detached.
Are we talking about 13 or 14?
I'm talking about 13.
13, right here.
Uh, no, not on.
I think it's 12. It's 12 where the attached.
12 in my box.
This is the copy I just got out of my box.
I got out of mine.
Are you looking at Pinehurst South, or are you looking at?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, no, she's.
Place.
I'm looking at Village Place.
Oh, I flipped over, I'm sorry.
There you go.
Yeah, my bad.
Okay, okay.
I thought we were moving on, and I started getting started here.
Okay.
So, page, I think it's 12, right?
Yeah.
Is the zero-lot line type example, whereas the next page over is detached, showing green space around the home. That's where Jane left off, but there is green space there, so that's, that's not zero-lot line. We agree, right?
I'm sorry.
All right, so you were addressing the point of the, of the attached, which is the zero-lot line. That's on page, what was it, 12? Yep.
Page 12.
Versus the.
Page 12 is commercial.
No.
Yeah, it's commercial. Page 11 is commercial.
Okay. The single-family attached.
Single-family attached is page 13 in what I'm looking at. Rear-loaded lots, regulating plan key number four.
Right.
Attached, you're right, they're right next to each other, but if they're attached, you necessarily won't be able to walk around your building that way.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. So if you're, if you're.
But that's by definition.
If you're saying that they've got 40% open space.
30.
30, yeah.
That open space is just the little titchy bit in the front where you walk out to the sidewalk.
Yes.
And the even littler titchy bit in between the house and the, and the garage.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying. That's it. So if there's going to be all these houses.
Well.
Attached in a row, maybe it would be nice to have some communal open space where, you know, people could walk around on the lawn, or children could play, you know, and maybe 8% is a little low for that.
Some of that space that you're referring to.
Yeah.
Is actually impervious surface.
What space?
The sidewalks. Right? So it wouldn't count toward that 30%. So it'd have to be met somewhere else. I think what I'm saying is it's not necessarily, it's not necessarily true that what you're seeing in this diagram represents all of the 30% that would be required in the development. Because as, as you observe, they're very, they're two little tiny spots here.
Just two little tiny spots.
Right, so what we, all you're seeing is what, what's required in one lot, not in the overall development.
My suggestion is that for the single-family attached, where the houses are actually the same size as the cottage lots, but the cottages have more land, that we provide a larger amount of open space so that the folks who are living in the single-family attached have some common open space that they can use.
Alex, they both have the same 30% requirement, right? So they do.
With the single-family attached lots, you have the opportunity to, again, zero lot, zero side-lot line development, depending on if you're a mid-block or if you're a corner lot. So corner lots are going to have more greener space than the mid-blocks by virtue of where you are in that row.
Right.
The detached, obviously, there, there are more stringent setbacks on the side, so there's going to be more pervious area on a, on a lot-by-lot basis for that. But if you want to look at a differing, minimum open space requirement for the single-family attached, that's an easy fix. I just need to know where that scale is.
15%, which is our current, comes, springs to mind. That's our current standard.
I don't know.
That our current standard?
I don't know. I think, you know, if we're talking about attached, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. That may be a lot size and a layout, both as to the lot and the home, that's appealing to certain buyers, certain owners, right? They, and, and it is very much oriented towards a, you know, a village setting or a urban neighborhood setting, so I don't know whether the additional green space really is required there to make it something that's saleable. And if we find that it's not, or a developer comes to us and wants a conditional zone, I guess we would have some ability there to, to change that requirement, would we not?
You would, and again, we're talking about.
Just.
Two areas.
Two strips, yeah.
Within Village Place.
Right. Good point.
Yeah. I think, I'm willing to, we got a microphone. I, I think we need to just work with what we've got here. I'm willing to talk to Jane further about any other, any changes that she would prefer to have, but I think this is, as I look at this now, going with the cottages, the detached, the attached, I think it makes, makes some sense.
And what about the open space we're going to?
The open space, maybe that's something we can discuss.
Because that, that may solve, I think, some concerns. I think that makes, that'll make the difference.
Patrick, you're saying.
I kind of wonder if, in order to get to the 30% non-impervious surface, you're going to have to have that open space anyway.
Well, then, let's put it in.
The question is, is it, is it public open space versus, or is it just?
Yeah.
Open space on a lot? I mean, I.
I think we're talking more public. From my point of view, I think we're talking more public open space.
Yeah, I'm thinking that also. That way, it's sort of set, and then homeowners or developers can play with the lot the way they want to.
Within our guidelines.
Yeah, within what we have.
So.
So what you're saying is what we have right now, move forward with.
What's that, Jeff?
So what you're saying is what we have now, you move forward with, because we're talking public spaces being more open, right?
I'm having trouble hearing you, but I think what you're saying is, I'm okay now, but I just want to raise the percentage on the public space.
On the, on the required open space in a development.
Open space, public space, yeah.
And to what, what point do you want to raise that to?
I want to raise it to whatever is currently in our PDO or.
15%.
15%. If that's what exists elsewhere, we're at least, there's some basis for it, and it's consistent, because that way, that way developers, we're not, we're mucking less in their development, because the open space is open space.
If we can move forward with that, I'll concur with it.
Okay.
So we brought up the Conditional District Framework in the opposite regard previously. If you have a requirement for 15%, and the developer brings you something that's a little bit less than 15%, you could deal with that and approve it.
Right.
Under the Conditional District Framework.
Yeah, but I, I think it's a, I think it's a fair standard, since it's something that's been worked with in the past, and I, so I think the community would understand that.
Yeah.
And I think a developer would also, if there's something that comes up, then it's got to be 14%, we could handle, councils can handle that.
Okay, so that's moving to 15% public open space, correct?
How do we define it in? I would just keep it as open space.
Open space, yes.
Okay.
Oh, you don't have to say public.
Got it. I think, I think we're reasonably, yeah, we're satisfied with that. Okay. What else did we need to confirm, Jane, and we'll go on to Pinehurst South?
I can flip.
Not yet. Alex tells us what to do.
Other than maybe a few minor tweaks or added notes for clarification, there's a double check on what maybe DOT or our current standards are on alley width. I think that and the change for the 15% open space for the single-family attached.
Yes.
Lots are the direction I've gotten, I can, I can move forward with that.
Okay.
Pretty sure you're not going to find a DOT standard for an alley width, but.
Yeah, I don't, don't.
What we might be able to find is comparable standards in other local governments.
Pinehurst South. I'm going to just stand up, but we'll keep, keep moving.
I don't understand what you said.
All right, so.
We're going to look, look some, look some more for a different standard and not 15%?
No, we're talking about the alleyway width question.
Oh, right, 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 right. And a lot of people don't like to parallel park, I'm just going to say.
Okay, so Pinehurst South, the document is structured just the same as Village Okay, so Pinehurst South, um, the document is structured just the same as, as Village Place. The, the provision that says forth, um, the, the other standards, just like with Village Place, is the regulating plan. That's section two point two, and my version does not have a page number on it or it's cut off. But...
Okay.
I think it should be about page eight.
Oh, that's the map. That's the map, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So that's, that's what you need to, to, you know, when you're going through these documents, that's what you have to refer back to as you go through the, the different, especially the, the site design and lot standards. These are, these are the building types and the building heights, block by block, color-coded. And again, this, this is based on, on the work with, with staff and the planning zoning board and, um, the, the approved, preferred build-out plan with the, with the small area plan. So you have the village core block there, um, Block A. Then you have, you know, Blocks B, which, which flink the railroad right-of-way and Highway five on the east side. The Block C, which has been the area we've looked at, is the, largely the mixed-use, commercial-type development block. And two, the, with the preferred build-out plan, you recall the, the large open space there to the south of, of that area. Blocks D, just to the east there, um, and below Blake Boulevard. Again, just sort of like a, a smaller area for mixed-use, office, retail. The Block E is the only residential, um, uh, land types there on the east side of Highway five that, um, abuts the, the under, the, the Pinehurst South cottages subdivision under construction and the Jackson Hamlet residential community to the south. A very small portion of, of Block F there to the west. Again, mixed-use, office, retail. And then it brings us to the west side of Highway five. Block G, which flinks the Highway five corridor to the west, mixed-use, office, retail. And then the remaining portion to the west side being the residential area, single-family attached and detached. And the final stretch being a office-type use there, which, um, which would be on the, it's on the south side of Monticello. And then, of course, you have the, the potential, if, if Monticello was realigned, again, just tab for, for office space there. Building heights, again, correspond with, with the appropriate designation there on the regulating plan. So then that'll take us next to the, to the lot standards, which again are, they resemble the, the same type of standards that we just discussed within Village Place. So I imagine there might be similar discussion with Pinehurst South as we just had with Village Place potentially.
Does it say, um, Turnberry Wood anywhere?
Am I hearing you would like it to say Turnberry Wood anywhere?
I would like it to end up being like Turnberry Wood.
Yeah, but we can't, how would we say that?
Well, and, and that's where we had this...
There is a Turnberry Wood, and that's where it is, where it is now.
Well...
We, Turnberry Wood. I mean...
Here's, here's what Turnberry Wood, about Turnberry Wood feels to me. It's, um... Mostly low-level, uh, buildings. With large lots and lots of trees. And what I'm seeing in Block C is three stories with mixed-use, which means you could have apartments on top of the commercial.
And that is what you approved in the small area plan?
Right. That's what we said we'd do.
Turnberry Wood, John probably knows the history lesson much better than I do. Probably Jeff too, but it's... Turnberry Wood is the commercial development where the developer came to Pinehurst asking us to annex them, and we said, "We don't want that in Pinehurst." And now it's the example we point to as the only acceptable solution for a commercial development. It's kinda funny.
Well, I, I wasn't here when you said no.
That, that's a long time ago though, Jeff. I mean, a lot of things have changed.
I know, but it's true.
What's good about it is that it's a buffer. Uh, it's a transition between residential and something like, um, the Belk Shopping Center.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what's good about it. And I, I'm just wondering again about the three-story height and the residential in addition to, um, the commercial that I'm seeing in Block C.
But again, this is the, this is in accordance with the small area plan that the council adopted.
Yeah, we did. I remember it.
But this is our chance to say... Looking at...
Also a chance to move forward.
Do we, do we wanna get to a finish on this, or do we wanna keep replowing the same ground over and over and over again?
We got through, wait a minute, we got through Village Place.
We did.
We're at small, we're at Village South, let's keep going, we can get through this.
Put it out there. In Block H, um, again, it's currently zoned RMF. And so we've got a variety of residential, um, uses that are permitted, but when you get down to the density, that they are at quite a variance from what our underlying zoning is. And that's a concern, um, for me, because I don't, I don't know whether that was understood at, by anybody at the time. I mean, you remember the questions that I raised, and I was told that the density would actually be less than what was in the, you know, less than this, less than that, so...
Because, because some of that area is zoned commercially now.
I'm talking about Block, Block H?
Some of that, that area is zoned commercial now.
Really? Block H?
Yeah.
But there's the, 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 the very southern portion of that, you can see the parcel line there. It's the biggest lot.
Young, developed, biggest lot to the south there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but Jane, uh, Block H, BH, it's one or two-story buildings. That's what it's saying, right?
Right, but, but that's... Under our current zoning...
Yeah.
It's, it's also, you know, limit thirty-five feet in height, which is...
Okay.
Two stories. And, and it's multifamily, which is, which is fine.
Yeah.
But that's got a, a cap of six units an acre. So here, this could be built out with, um, what, what would, I didn't do the math on the, um, multifamily for the form-based code. What's, what does that work out to? Do we know for, um, I guess it doesn't matter, but...
Pedro, those requirements on? Hey, here we are.
Okay, so, so that's a question that I have. And then the third question is hotel in, um, Block B? That, that looks new to me, and my concern there is, do we want to be drawing traffic to Route five from elsewhere as opposed to creating a neighborhood where there are services for the local, you know...
But Jane, that strip of land there is fronting on the railroad track. So I don't know how desirable it will be from a neighborhood standpoint as opposed to some sort of light commercial. I mean...
Well, that, no, we are talking about commercial. One, two, and three uses...
Yes.
Are commercial.
I understand. And I, I thought you were, I thought you were starting to hint that we ought to do something there so it's more, um...
I'm just concerned about the hotel, which is drawing, would be drawing people in from outside.
Oh, I'm sorry, the number eight issue, okay. Yeah, I, I haven't given that too much thought, I have, uh...
Have been told that there's a shortage of hotel accommodations in Pinehurst. And I don't know that we've accommodated, if there was... Did, did it make it into the...
Yes, it's in Village Place.
Village Place plan for that...
And allowed hotel use?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And in Block B, I believe it was. I'm sorry, in which it was approved, where?
Village Place.
In Village Place, yeah.
It was in the plan for, yeah. I don't recall it being specifically addressed in the Pinehurst South.
Well, in all of Pinehurst South, if I'm looking at it correctly now, um, the only place where there would be, or for a hotel, would be that strip of land. Now, um, I'm... If you were gonna put one anywhere, it would be somewhere on that strip of land.
It's about as good a place as any, huh?
Yeah, but, uh, so I don't know if I'd wanna close the door there. I would really, to me, it's about the quality of the development there. It's a hotel, it's a hotel. I mean, this is gonna be the other gateway to the village of Pinehurst.
It is.
Right now, it's just a, a road that people take going back and forth to get down to Highway one, generally speaking. But we're gonna have two first-rate golf courses there built by the resort further down on Highway five in Aberdeen there, but they're getting pretty close to Pinehurst. And you're gonna have that road widened in Pinehurst to three lanes and in Aberdeen to four lanes. So there's gonna be a lot of activity there over the next several years. I, my big concern here is what does this look like for someone when they're driving to Pinehurst and they decide to come up Highway, uh, uh, five there? Because I, I'd like them to have that same experience they get when they come in to some of the other entrances to Pinehurst. They should feel they're in a Pinehurst, they're in a new community. And so that, that's my concern there.
Sure. And, and two, and, and that point is probably, in it, in my opinion, has been glossed over or, or lost through much of this process, even with the Planning and Zoning Board, largely because it's overwhelming, but there's a robust set of architectural standards in this document where it will have, and the village will have, the opportunity through that conditional zoning, that legislative process, to see what they're proposing it to look like. How is it going to be constructed? What materials? How much, uh, you know, the, the, the percentage of glazing on an elevation to the point where, you know, what type of bays or balconies or railings or cornices? I mean, it gets to that detail. And conditional district, correct? So you will be able to have design control, especially for all the, all the non-residential uses.
Pat's point is well-taken. I think we've had it in our mind for a while, that this is a gateway, and we, it's, it's really the part that's, is least developed as anything we have. And I'm very interested in your comment just now, Alex, I'd like to see those standards. I'm thinking, be very interested in those standards as they, as they come along. My, my question about a hotel here is, we're talking, you know, what, what brand or what type of hotel are we talking about? And, uh, you know, it's gonna be mid-scale, upscale, whatever. What's that, sir?
Super eight.
Which?
Super eight.
Super eight. Well, that wasn't exactly what I had in mind.
That's, you're, you're killing me with that.
I don't think they can qualify, they can't keep their lights on.
That's right, no, that's somebody else.
Yeah, you have to...
That's both else.
That's, that's Red Roof, I think, or one of those.
Consider the land value as well. I mean, certain types of establishments just aren't gonna get in there.
No, I, I agree, I've already expressed my concern about that.
The problem we have making...
Approach, it's, it's, you're, you're coming to our community. So we oughta make it, people oughta feel, "Wow, I'm in Pinehurst," just like they do now when they drive in other roads. This is Pinehurst.
I think the problem we're gonna have though is that Highway five is a DOT road.
It is.
And it's gonna be expanded, okay, up to a certain point. But what can we do to make the road at its sides look like going north and south? And how can we make that look as good as it can look?
Yeah, we can't do anything.
It won't be, uh, won't be the, uh, won't be Linden Road, it won't be Highway two coming off the circle, but it can be, as we hope it will turn out to be, Rattlesnake Trail, this is the version of that over here, but a busier area.
So again, that's what section five in these documents...
So when do we see that?
Section five for a minute, please.
That's, that's the architectural standards.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and...
I found it.
Trust me, there, when we were first reviewing as staff, at least I know myself, I, I was screaming. I mean, we, there's terminology, you can tell, you know, you know, architects had a, a very heavy hand in, in drafting these regulations. They're, they're very prescript, very. And, and they would only allow for a, a much higher quality design. And, and it goes, to say it goes above and beyond our existing design requirements for non-residential building outside the historic district is an understatement.
So what do we wanna focus on here, in your view? Or do you just want us to continue to ask a few more questions on this?
Again, this document, other than the regulating plan, is, is going to follow same dimensional criteria and, and the others, similar to street design criteria, um, that with Village Place. So if we need to have the same discussions here as we did relative to density or open space for the single-family attached, um, again, we'll, we'll look up the, the alleyway width. I, I, I think going through Village Place, we, exercise, we should be ready to go right at and approach the Pinehurst South.
I've got two things, okay?
Yeah?
And one's redundant from what I said earlier, which is trying to make sure that the, you use an asterisk where you can use an asterisk, and, and we, people are gonna be even more sensitive to Village South. My other question, uh, was generated really when I attended the Planning and Zoning Board meeting the other day in the, the discussion on Jackson Hamlet. So on page, um, it's four point oh, page thirty, um, I just, on that map there, I just circled with a note to myself, Jackson Hamlet. So we need to figure out what we're gonna do there so that we factor in, uh, that community. And, uh, I, I heard somebody who spoke before the Planning and Zoning Board refer to the community as, you know, the redheaded stepchild. I have used that myself regarding Village South many, many months ago, that it obviously is a neglected area when you think of Pinehurst. So we've gotta figure out what we can do there to be sure we protect the integrity of what I would describe as some worried homeowners. You, you were there. There, there were, there were some homeowners who were worried about their own personal situation with the homes that they've lived in for years, or that it was handed down to them by, you know, ancestors. And I, I think that's very doable. But we also should think about, what do we do to upgrade that, that, the community? What can we do there that we would do anywhere else to make sure they feel like that community's part of Pinehurst? So that, that's my only other thought.
I, 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 I just, I think it's a very difficult situation. Jackson Hamlet is populated, to my understanding, by some people who have very, very deep roots there. Um, and sadly, not like, unlike a lot of other areas of the country, it's a community where their young people are growing up and they're, they're finding opportunities elsewhere, and they're not coming, and they're not coming back. So... They're appropriately nostalgic about their, their situation. But I think realistically, what is going to happen, particularly in that area right there, is that these current homeowners are gonna age out, and there's gonna be pressure to devi, to redevelop it. And when it redevelops, we want it to be, that redevelopment to be consistent with... So I, I think this is more about communication than changing our plan. I think that, I think we need to reassure them that we're not, we're not there to take their land, we're not there to tell them they have to do anything different. We're just laying the groundwork for what comes next, because it doesn't appear that... Probably don't wanna say it like this, but it doesn't appear like, you know, their children are gonna come, gonna come back and live there, or, you know, their grandchildren or what, what have you. And it's going to, someday, somebody's gonna offer the, them or their, their, their family, their existing family, a lot of money for that land. And when that happens, and when they make that decision, we just wanna set the stage for appropriate redevelopment.
Well, keep in mind, that Jackson Hamlet is the, will be the closest point in Pinehurst's corporate limits to, uh, Pinehurst's number ten and number eleven. That, that, that's the, they're it, they're the point in the spear there between... They're the point in the spear there between our corporate limits and that, those two new developed courses. And we know that the resort is going to make that a first-class facility down that road. And so there should be some things we can do early on, first to assure people that the safety and soundness of the homes they have. But secondly, what can we do in the way of infrastructure there, with just some roads, landscaping that would make things a little more amenable? And anyway, those are my thoughts. I'm fine, otherwise. Otherwise, I don't have anything else to raise in this.
The RETJ, they're not residents. The roads don't belong to us.
Yeah. So they don't, and they don't, the fear again of not having a voice because they don't vote in the municipal election, but they are subject to, you know...
To our zoning.
Correct. Yep. So that is, I mean, that's the same with anyone in our RETJ. But, you know, a bright spot, as I mentioned to you all via email, that came from that meeting last Thursday, is that there is a formalized advocacy group there within the community with real structure.
And we haven't had that for a long time to work with.
That we've...
They've been there, we just, they don't, they haven't engaged us, we weren't aware they were there, I don't think.
Right, right. Now we can do that.
There's, there can be an opportunity now, yes.
Yeah.
Well, and the fact that they are in our RETJ offers some protection to them.
It could, yeah, from surrounding areas or pressure.
Right, right. But the, I think the idea came up of redrawing the map and not including them in the, in the small area plan. But again, I think it's better that they're in it and remain under our RETJ as well. Isn't that the common understanding?
So long as we can, we can make sure that the language in the future PDO amendments are protective of the existing built environment, that if you're not redeveloping by definition or, or, you know, a brand-new development and maybe another protection for pre-existing lots of record. So that was the main charge, other than being available for some, for some communication and education on the process and what it really means. That was a charge that I took from that meeting, that I'm going to make sure that we've got those type protections, that the existing homes, existing lots there to a degree are grandfathered and therefore protected. They can remain, as they mentioned in the meeting, kind of remain as they are and not be imposed.
Good, good. Now, what other questions do we have then for Alex on this Pinehurst South? Pat, you've gone through some of your things. Jane, do you have some other issues you want to raise?
I know you've probably told us this a whole bunch of times, but I can't remember the answer. What's the difference between a medical office and a medical, is it clinic?
You just, so I'll give you a little preview of the PDO amendments that are coming with our use table. We have a very nice definition for just general office and medical office. But for whatever reason, maybe years past, we don't have it seated in our use table. So we're going to propose to seat that in our use table, our current table, and then also in the Village Place and Pinehurst South Form-Based District Use Table. So it's basically, it wouldn't be like, like, think of it as like typical outpatient-type procedures would be, that would fall under, under that definition.
Medical office?
Correct.
And medical clinic is different?
A little different, but not much.
But both will be defined, if I hear you right.
They're defined currently. They're both defined currently. We just don't have a generic medical office listed in our table of permitted and special uses, which by virtue, we allow because we don't specifically prohibit.
Okay, Jane, any other questions on that? Just the medical.
Well, I've got, I've got a bunch of little...
Well, no, not necessarily. No, but I mean, those sort of details, as we agreed earlier, would be the sort of thing that you can follow up with Alex or whomever on.
To Jane's earlier point about...
It won't hurt the direction to Alex. Jeff, go ahead.
Jane's earlier point about the density in the multifamily area on the west side. I do feel like it's appropriate to say that the density there shouldn't necessarily be the same as the density in Village Place. And I'm wondering if this framework is kind of laid out the same outcome, right? Because the lot sizes are similar, the same.
They are.
Exactly the same.
And what's there right now is, I guess, a zone multifamily, but what's down there now is mostly like townhouses, right? That...
Single-family homes, too.
Yeah, there's some in there, yeah. Duplexes.
This seems more suburban compared to Village Place.
That's a good point. Yeah, when I drove through it recently, I was somewhat surprised about how, you know, like a suburban neighborhood.
So less dense?
Yeah, it was less dense.
I mean, is that what Jeff Sanborn is saying? I think that's what we're thinking, but is that what you're...
Yeah, I don't know if it's about the uses that are contemplated here, or the mix of uses, or the dimensional requirements associated with those uses here. We can, we can scratch our head on that, maybe.
It looked like, as I drove through it, that over time, it just had evolved that way.
Yeah.
With a bunch of single-family homes, modest homes, and then some townhouses, and then some more homes.
Yeah.
And, you know, nice neighborhood.
Which would be better than what we have now.
Alex?
I would appreciate that effort with the density.
Yeah, so the building types we're showing there, and this is the Block H, are the single-family attached, like townhome development, and then the detached, and then there's a multifamily, which is, which is something that would be more dense. So I can immediately see striking that within that block. And then we can approach, just for sake of consistency, maybe another open space or a, just a plain density cap there as well.
I like that suggestion. Again, if you drive through it, you get the feeling that a multifamily would sort of be out of place compared to the rest of that community.
Probably there because that's where it's zoned right now.
That's probably it.
But our MF is quite different, I think, from, from these uses in density.
Maybe, maybe not, I don't know.
In density.
Yeah.
They are in density, it is in density.
Does that help you, Alex?
That's a start. Now, again, do we want to try to approach it with a minimum open space requirement, similar to how we agree with Village Place? I mean, that's, that's pretty consistent. Again, it could allow for some amenity area for the future residents as well.
I think if you're going to do it in Village Place, you certainly should have the same parallel.
I agree. And I also think, I also think that neighborhood is, would accommodate, well, the idea of some open space, in the sense of a shared community.
Right. Jeff Morgan, did you, did you hear that? And are you agreeable to that, the open space question?
Yes, I heard, and I'm agreeable to it.
Thank you. Anything else for Alex? Direction to him.
When we, and I'm taking this out of the table of uses that I peeked at in the, no, it provides for private clubs in Pinehurst South. Is that just the boys' and girls' club? Or are you looking, thinking that there's going to be other kinds of, like a tennis club or something like that?
So in order to not, okay, this exercise that we went through with the Planning and Zoning Board, which is an excellent way to get familiar with the table of permitted and special uses and special requirements, if you, if you liked. Pat, I know you were there for a lot of those discussions. We went row by row by row. We have the regulating plan, which just says, you know, these type buildings, mixed-use office, retail, and then our residential stuff. So we look at what is, and what's the current base zoning? What is a mixed-use office or retail type general use? And then we go down our use table. And again, you know, row and column by column, what we thought within, again, within our current table, so not to completely strike or remove or throw in new type of definitions or land uses within that table. And we felt that they closely resembled what generically would be allowed in a office or retail. So private club, think like a fraternal-type organization. We have the VGA downtown, it's the most recent one I can think of that we've had in our, you know, come into the area. And I can't, you've seen it probably more recent than I have. I'm not, I can't recollect right off the top of my head which blocks we proposed that they, they be allowed in, unless it was just universally through all the building types that are one, two, three.
I forget, I forget, I'm sorry.
You'll get a crack at that.
All right.
I'm fine with closed here.
Anything else? Okay. And Jane and I'll come to see you on details as we go forward. Thanks, Alex.
You.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Good work.
That's good.
Good work. Now, we have a couple other items, of course, and should we go straight to that?
Thanks, Alex.
Take a break.
I don't know. Matt and Jeff Battin waiting back here.
Jeff's saying something.
It's, we'll come back at seven, what is it, 7:46? Got five minutes.
Thank you.
We're in recess for five minutes. Work session of the Pinehurst Villies Council. This is April 11, 2023. We're on agenda item number three of the work session. Jeff, Doug, carry on.
There we go. All right. Okay, so lots going on today for me, and so I'm not really on my A-game with regard to this presentation, so I brought my lifeline. What we prepared for you here is kind of a a combination between a budget preview and and an attempt to seek some guidance with you to clarify an important point on where you want to go. And it it relates to a question that that Patrick asked us a couple of months ago now about the feasibility of moving up the public services move in the in the plan and/or moving the parking deck out in the plan. And as we as we analyze that through our SOP development framework, we recognize that we could get to a feasible solution in one of two ways. And the appropriateness of choosing one or one of those versus the other really hinges on what you want to do with the library project. Specifically, do you want to do all of the the expansion of library and archives at the current site? Or do you want to focus on improving the archive experience in the current facility and build a new library somewhere else? And the reason that that's pivotal is because that we believe that without having that expanded library requirement on the village green, we don't, in the near term, need to to necessarily address the parking concern downtown. Conversely, if we are going to expand that library and archives experience on the green, we we need to come to table with a parking solution. And and so the two options that we've 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 laid out to you here have relatively similar results in terms of budget performance over the next five years with the same tax rates and everything else, but they have a different mix of major capital projects along that theme. So, uh, I guess I'll have to scroll.
Yeah.
So, as I've mentioned, two budget options with the parking deck, with without the parking deck. You could also think about those as, the first one is expand the library and archives at the current location. The second one is build a new library somewhere else and put the archives in the current facility. So between the two scenarios, this is a snapshot of what's the same. Same tax rate structure for the five-year plan. And this is an important piece of all. This is this is kind of the budget snapshot piece of this for you.
Yeah.
Because everybody's concerned about what's going to happen as a result of revaluation. And several years ago, the Village of Count, Village of Pinehurst Council adopted a policy framework that said that when we do revaluations, you're going to look toward staying within a CPI-adjusted budget, a revenue-neutral tax rate. And this does that. That 23 and 1/2 cents is our calculated result when we do the CPI adjustment on a revenue-neutral rate. What's lost in this a little bit is that last year's plan called for a half-cent increase going from 23 to 24. So that CPI adjustment will will, you know, on average, is going to result in a slightly higher tax bill for our residents and and property owners on average, but that's offset to some degree by the half-cent that was already built into the five-year plan. So, and then the the framework going forward from there, where you go from 23 and 1/2 to 23 and 1/2, 24, 24 and 1/2 to 24 and 1/2, 24 and 1/2, is exactly the same as what was called for in the in the plan that you adopted last year. You see the additional penny in 2026, and that corresponds to the the increased staffing requirements associated with the expansion of library and archives. So all that is, all of that is consistent, so.
So FY '24 is the half penny more than last year?
FY '24 is, if, based on the revaluation, if, after we calculate what is revenue, revenue-neutral, in other words, what would generate basically the same revenue as what we would have gotten under the old valuation?
Right.
But then correct it back for the increasing cost of doing business associated with inflation. And it does not include the half-cent.
Okay.
Otherwise, otherwise does not include an additional half-cent that was, would have been required in in accordance with the plan that you adopted last year.
Okay, that's that's helpful. I appreciate that.
So similarities, apart from the tax tax rate structure. Both of these options include the library expansion in '25. They both include 700K for synthetic turf on on one of the two remaining fields in '25. They both include a ladder chuck purchase in '27. Now, it's, it might be important or helpful to note that we need to program that in '27 so that we can expect to receive it in '29. So it's in the plan, but it won't, it ultimately won't be money that's spent in '27, and it'll be a budget roll forward, and we'll probably have to go through that two years because of the complexity of that piece of equipment. So they both include the 400,000 for Fire Station 93 design in '28, and they both include another million for a second, or the final, the final of the three athletic field synthetic turf projects in FY '28. Now, what's what's different? So with parking, again, so you could think about that again as 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 doing the library and archives expansion onsite. Would have the parking facility in '26, so it would be ready when, you know, when we're completing the library project as well. Correspondingly, you would not have that in the plan with the, without parking, obviously. The with parking option includes a $6 million public services complex move in '27, and 100% of that would be financed. Conversely, without parking, it's the same $6 million bill, but it's done one year earlier in '26, and only 50% of it's financed in order to make the numbers all work. With parking results in inability to to complete the $1 million of programmed improvements that are unspecified right now in West Pinehurst Park, whereas the without Pinehurst, without parking option would allow us to continue to keep that in the plan. Again, those are unspecified requirements, so it's well out in the future. You may wind up rolling that thing forward anyway, either or, but but it it fits in the plan. All right. What we see is kind of the pros and cons of splitting the library and archives versus keeping them in the same footprint. And this is written from the standpoint of splitting them. Four, four and 1/2 million savings from the 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 parking structure, less negative impact on the village green and the corresponding impact on our our landmark and our relationship with the park service. We can relieve relieve some parking pressure by removing the current library patrons from the downtown environment. New construction is thought to be cheaper than renovation of that very substantial building. In particular, exterior expansion. The library would be closer to the community center. No matter which one of the three options that you might eventually choose, it results in a, in a, in a, in a situation where collaboration between the community center and the library is eas, more easily accomplished for programming and kids programming and things like that. More space for library programming because we're not trying to cram it all in down on the green, more space to create a historic, kind of a history of Pinehurst exhibit in the archives, because the archives can expand in that, into that entire existing facility. And there's room to move the art, the welcome center out of the theater building and put it in the archives as well, which can save us money on that side. And then we see a couple of downsides. One is there's less draw to downtown, and we expect that split operations are going to require some additional staffing. Although, we haven't really fully contemplated what that additional staffing might look like, and it's not built into the option yet, so we're going to have to do some more homework on that. All right. So you can see what the existing space is on that on that top chart with regard to the current library and archives facility. And then what you see down below is what was, what was identified in the needs assessment. Now, we we have a little bit of update that I think, I hope you had a chance to read my note earlier this morning, but we have a bit of an update from Oakley Collier on what they expect currently to be the the need for both library and archives space. If I recall correctly, they, they're suggesting between 9,000 and 9,500 square feet for the library, which is lower than all of these, right? And then 6,500 to 7,500 square feet for the archives, which wasn't really addressed in this needs assessment. I'm not going to go over the details, but that's that's what the makeup of those those suggested numbers were. This diagram is from the needs assessment as well, and it kind of shows what, you know, that low range of that 11,000 square foot library would look like. You know, they, their imagery is a little bit off. They show us spilling over their, for whatever reason, the building wasn't centered properly in the lot as they, in the products that they used.
Wait, Jeff, the dotted line is the property line, or that's the secondary expansion tier, mid-range?
Expansion.
There's the interior, I'm sorry, the dotted line. Okay.
Yeah, dashed.
The yellow, the yellow depicted area is for the low-range tier one. That's the 11,000 square feet, if I recall correctly.
Yeah, so if you add the yellow, it would give us 16,000 total, 16,500.
Yeah. And then that dotted line is how much, how much additional space those upper, those increased, no, uh, require, potential requirements would have called for.
Okay.
All right.
Table on, in that, in this table, right down here?
Yeah.
Where it shows the programming analyst analysis, tier one, tier two.
Yep. I see it.
Best practice, I guess it was actually tier two, but.
I'll look at that.
That dotted line shows the difference, how much more, more space would be required in order to go from that tier one to tier two.
Yep.
Yeah, I actually misspoke. So the the yellow is 14,500, including the existing building, and then if you add the dotted white area, that's another 2,000, so a total of 16,500.
Right. Now, it's important to to recognize that the library needs assessment did not contemplate the need to expand the archives because it was done before we made the agreement to take over the archives as well.
Yep.
Puzzle. So that's the imagery they were working on. It's not really accurate. The needs assessment also showed an outcome for, right across from Village Hall here. So here's the police station here, right, in the parking lot from the police stations over here. And so this is one of the, one of the three options that we we've suggested as a potential landing space for a new library building. And this was kind of studied during the needs assessment. And so this is, here's your low-tier, low-range tier one, right? So that's an 11,000 square foot building.
10,000, yeah.
I'm sorry, 10,000 square foot building, and you can see what that looks like.
I'm confused of where are we on the street? Where are we there?
This is Village Hall over here.
Okay.
Right?
Oh, I see now.
This is the police station.
Mm-hmm.
Here. And so the greens apartment is way down here somewhere, maybe off the.
Yeah, it's off of the.
Yeah, off the map, right? So it's not an exact fit, but this shows you kind of rough order of magnitude what, approximately what a 9,000 to 9,500 square foot new library would, what the size would look like on that, in that location, in accordance with the the most recent update we have from Oakley Collier. Even though this diagram didn't come from them, it came from the needs assessment. And again, these are the three options that we suggested for a a split library outcome. Oakley Collier thinks that any one of these three is feasible. They haven't had the opportunity to study a preference, but they're all feasible, and based on the information that we got from them this morning, they believe they're all preferable to trying to expand it on the village green, put everything on the village green. I think this is maybe too much detail, that one, for for this, this is, so this is with parking, right? That's the, that's the upper half of the five-year plan that we typically show you, right? I'm going to zero in on the the fund balance and the and the operating margin that's typically at the bottom of that same page. So this is with parking, right? And so with that same property tax structure that I described before, you know, we we focus a lot on fund balance, right? And how that plays out over time. And we focus a lot on our operating margin to, you know, to double-check to see whether or not we're, we're in the right ballpark with things. And what you see is, with this plan, our our fund balance continues to climb a little bit here, and then we start to spend it. And by '28, we're actually a little bit below where we want to be. Probably close enough, and you know, you're not adopting a budget right now. This is just a projection, so.
That's based on our policy of 30%.
That's right, yeah.
Okay.
And then looking at operating margin, as I, as we've informed you in the past, we really try to keep this generally between about 89 and 91%. And what you're seeing here is our operating margins are low in order to fund all this capital that's, that we're expending in these years, right? That ultimately results in us getting down to the fund balance in the range of where we want it, and our operating margins kind of close to where we want to be. This is a little concerning, 93% is a little higher than we like it to be. But another thing that we've noticed over time is that it's not uncommon for us to have this at 92, or maybe even 93, in that fifth year in the five-year plan. But when we get to that year, as we move forward, and in 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 time, it actually doesn't play out that badly. We wind up with this, you know, relaxing back down into the range that we're looking for. So this is a little higher than we like here, but it's, we can probably live with it, and, you know, there's as good a chance as not that although this is below our fund balance policy, when we, by the time we get there, you might be there, you might be above 30% anyway. So the long and short of this is we think that this is a feasible plan, we think that it's a responsible plan, and, you know, it might not be as desirable from a standpoint of these numbers as the the second solution, but it's, we think it's acceptable. So here's what it looks like with parking or without parking. As you can say, see, it's the same trend, right? So our our fund balance continues to climb, and then we start to spend it down to accomplish all these, this major capital that we've been known was in the pipeline for quite some time. And we wind up landing very close to where we want to be as a floor in FY '28. Conversely, our operating margins, I mean, it's kind of the same trend. We're, you know, we're below where we want to be here, but what it's doing is funding this, these capital requirements that we're, we're seeing here. And we wind up being right where we want to be in, with regard to operating margin range in the out years of '27, actually '26 through '28. So this is a little more solid of a plan, but, you know, I, I think that staff could get behind either one of these. So, now, this is some detail, just detail on the capital. I guess that's it. But so we've shown you this, hoping that we might get some direction from you on, do you want to pursue the option of expanding the library and archives all on the village green in conjunction with the current facility? Or do you want us to pursue the option of splitting the library and archives?
I don't think there's any, any, in my view, from what I've seen and what you've said, there's no decision to make here. There's only one option, and that's to go with a separate facility for the library.
Absolutely.
I don't see anything that, any reasonable, we can do the other alternative, but I don't think it's necessary in going with a new facility for the library, I think really is where it's headed. Question becomes, what's the lot? Or which which of the lots might be used?
I think another question.
There's different things on that.
I think another question is the size of this library.
And and size, there, there's some questions there.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the, at the data back in your chart, the library square footage was 3,825 square feet. Now, if we double that, double that, it would get to 7,650 square feet, and we'd be doubling it while the number of our visitors have been cut in half. Okay? Because that, again, the pre-COVID situation, needs assessment is pre-COVID. So I think it's wise probably to split off the library. I would like to see whatever our architects worked up, just to see if they have some sketches of that, of what their assignment was. But I I think we've, whatever we design needs to be a library for the future, not a library for the past. And so I'm, and by reducing the amount of square footage from what they're suggesting to 7,600, which is twice the size of the current square footage, we would save some costs, we could build a first-class library, and, which would also then provide us with some money, because we know that whatever renovation is going to have to take place at the archives, that building's going to need some changes to it internally, if we're going to have a welcome center, and we're going to make that a better visitor experience, just like.
Sounds like you're on board with splitting the, splitting library, library and archives.
Yeah, I I think.
Plenty of time to have the conversation about what the actual library is going to be.
Yeah, but but I think it's very important about the the costs here. What we're watching, what we, what we see is, and these are questions I'll have when we get to the next step, I see we have a built-in tax increase. I don't know if I, I'm going to be comfortable with that. I see we also are, we're still using a very conservative and a very good number of a 30% policy as to where we, how much money we want to sort of have in the kitty. But I would be curious if if we dropped our policy down to 20%, which is still 100 and some odd percent above what the law requires, how does that, how do those numbers look? So, and I I don't see the lot, the parking issue to me, the parking garage is sort of a moot issue to me. We don't own the land, so it's really, you know, it's beyond aspirational. So we would ought to just back off from from that and focus on a library in archives. And I I also think we ought to. And I, I also think we ought to be careful of, of what we put further out, even if it's to 2028, as far as numbers in the budget. Because if we reduce some of those numbers regarding West Pinehurst Park and some other things, it will reduce the amount of revenue we need downstream, at least for our planning purposes. Now, we can always add things back in.
I'll try to explain something here to you.
Go ahead.
Adequately, but. This tells us is we need that tax structure, tax rate structure, in order to fund our operations, not capital, operations.
Yeah.
At point, at point 91, there's a cushion there.
Want to be between 80, 89 and 91% steady state, so that we know that we have roughly 10% available for necessary capital improvements.
Well, I guess I.
So that, in order to get that, we need that tax rate.
I'm, we can have, obviously, we'll have another discussion on that. I don't, I'm, I think if you get to 92 or 93, we're not jeopardizing the, the safety and soundness of the village of Pinehurst. And we, well, matter of fact, we would.
Once before, but this is, this is sound financial policy.
I'm not questioning whether this is sound.
Sound principle that we have built.
I understand that, but it does.
Our strong financial condition on.
I understand. The other thing that, only other thing that worries me is I saw the phrase debt financing twice in this. And we need to have a real discussion before we're going to issue debt, I believe. The debt, this, this village has been debt-free for quite a long time. I don't know how long.
No, no, that's not true, Pat.
Well, when was it? When did we last have a debt?
Just did it last year.
Two, two years ago.
For what?
Our last debt payment was about two years ago with respect to the fire station. No, the police, fire station.
Community, community center.
And when was that? The Fair Barn wasn't paid off till two years ago?
We have repeatedly used debt.
We've effectively used debt.
This building, the fire station, the police department.
I understand debt financing is getting used. I said, it's just something that makes me nervous. Debt financing is a commitment on the part of the village, on behalf of its taxpayers, to pay future bills.
Right.
And, and I, that.
So conversely, we could just jack, jack the tax rate up so that we can get the money out of them now. That's the, that's the other option.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe it's a binary choice. I think we can look at other things. But I don't have the answer right now, but I just don't think it's binary like that. When did we pay off the Fair Barn? You said.
Renovation.
Just a couple of years ago.
It was just a couple of years, it was the Fair Barn. I thought it was related to police or fire, but it was the Fair Barn, just a couple of years ago. So we have used debt financing very appropriately. We'll get to that when we get to the budget.
Yeah.
On that. I made that, make sure that Jeff Morgan had any questions about this location of the library archives, how you feel about that, Jeff?
Split the library, I don't want it on the green. Over.
Okay. The, the no, the, the no parking option, to build a new library wherever.
Correct.
Renovate. And Doug or Jeff, could you just preliminarily in a way indicate if we've, if we, as we are planning to follow this scenario, what would the square footage requirement of the existing building be for the archives? And does that mean we have to expand the building still?
Oh, wait a minute.
It would be, it would be a renovation of the building, not an expansion.
With a little bit of extra, I.
Yeah, okay.
Even after you put the, the welcome center in there, depending on what we do with.
Right, right.
I don't, I don't think you could necessarily put what we currently call the welcome center in there, but we could have a welcome center in there.
Yes, okay, okay, all right. We may come to the point, though, in looking at these plans in much more detail, whether we want to move the welcome center or not, I think, depending on about how we see that in the future. But it would be a staffing aid and a cost aid if we did move it. I understand that. All right. I think this has been a very helpful briefing on this. And I don't think Doug could say anything at this point, Jeff.
I know, like, he came up here, he didn't even need me.
All right, any other questions on this subject for?
I'll save that lifeline then.
Okay, yeah.
All right.
No, that one you definitely do.
Well done. Thank you. And we'll move on to our next agenda item, which will bring Matt McCure, I had, I think, to the table with Mr. Sanborn as well.
Yep.
All right.
So it's General Assembly bill time again. It's that time of year, there's a lot of activity, a lot of important issues. And, you know, a couple of weeks ago, we learned about, I think initially it was three of them, related to, primarily to the subject of affordable housing and workforce housing. And, and, you know, after that, we found another one that was also related to that, but it was an incentive-based approach rather than the preemption approach that was being advocated in the other original three. And then, then more recently, we, we learned of the short-term rental preemption bill that's been introduced into the Senate, into the Senate. And then just today, I found that there's another short-term rental bill that actually might be a little bit more helpful, because it creates some opportunities to, for us to specifically regulate some things, so.
Who's, what's the number on the new bill? I didn't hear that one. You know?
No, 667.
Seven was the most.
Is the first, the first bill, yeah. And we don't know this.
At least 290.
It's Senate Bill 290, a bill to, to be. I'm not sure what happened with my, my cut and paste there.
Improve the safe rental.
An act to improve the safe rental of certain properties by requiring three compliant, complying compliance with local ordinances and codes and establishing a maximum occupancy limitation.
Do we know the chief sponsor on that, anybody?
Sawyer.
Sawyer, okay.
And we have these, if you want to look at the, the details on those, we've.
I can look up that bill.
Well, they're, they're attached.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't see that.
They're attached to Novus Agenda.
That's fine. Didn't look at it. Didn't look at that section.
290? Can you see? Oh, I can, I have to zoom in.
Some of them are House bills and some of them are Senate bills.
Right.
And the attachments are in the numerical order, first for the House and then for the Senate. But on the list, they're in a different order, so it's okay.
Yes, we, we just, I thought, we, we just threw this list together.
Yep.
Today as we're getting ready for the meeting, so.
Yep.
So you can see that, so this is, this is embedded in, in current statutory language. And nothing in this subsection shall be deemed to prevent a local government from enforcing ordinances related to maximum occupancy, as that term is defined in General Statute 42A-4, for a vacation rental property that is subject to the provisions of 42A of the General Statute, so that's one change. And then under definitions, maximum occupancy is the maximum number of persons allowed in a vacation rental. The maximum occupancy is measured as an amount not exceeding four persons per bedroom.
Four.
That's different than a four-person limitation.
I think we'd.
Actually represents the number of bedrooms and bathrooms on, on the property and prohibits the rental of the property to a tenant if the maximum occupancy will be exceeded. For the purposes of this subdivision, the number of bedrooms and bathrooms on the property shall be determined by the most recent tax record, which is our approach. Anyway, like, I haven't had the opportunity to read down through this in detail. I found it today when I was putting together the rest of this, so.
And this is Senate Bill 290. Right. Interesting.
Maybe you can drive.
I'd like to mention one other bill that's not, listen there, this is HB 463. It's a, a bill that would ban foreign adversaries from purchasing farmland. And what I found interesting about the bill is that the bill includes any land deemed agricultural or land situated within a 25-mile radius of a military base, military installation or military airport. Now, my, my understanding is that we are within 25 miles of a base, the base.
Sure.
And though it probably doesn't touch us much, I, I think it's primarily aimed at agricultural land, it does encompass things.
Or ETJ.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I, I don't know, it is sponsored by the majority leader of the House. And so I take that to be somewhat serious. There are other states with similar bills. Nevertheless, it, it may affect us. It's just, just, I just pointed out as a bill, HB 463, just to watch, just in case.
So I don't have anything prepared with regard to a recommendation on this. I, I know some of you were interested in talking about it tonight, so I, I pulled together all the associated bills in case there was some particular thing you wanted to chase down or have a conversation about.
I would just make a comment or add to it that at least Don Boito, the mayor of Foxfire, has already been to Raleigh earlier, late, last Tuesday, a week ago today. And he had a conversation with McGinnis on the one hand and Jackson on the other. And I think we, our next step is to maybe have some conversations with the League of Municipalities on probably all of these bills and determine what sort of other follow-up to our elected representatives we might want to make. I think that, I haven't heard anything formal from Carol Haney or Robbie Farrell, Southern Plains Everdeen, but I'm pretty sure they're all concerned about this, and maybe there's a coordinated effort that has an opportunity here.
Yeah, I think that we, we would certainly carry more weight if we, if we are banded together with our.
Our mass.
Our neighboring communities.
And one of our residents has already written a letter to Senator McGinnis and others, maybe to the whole Senate, actually, on the Senate Bill 667, the SDR-related bill there. I'm not hearing anything, at least in our area, to support these sort of bills, but is there any silver lining in one or two of them, Jeff, that you may be aware of at this point in time? I have not read them all.
Well, I think that the, the incentive-based approach is.
Yeah.
Promising development, if you will. And it's, it's the approach that's advocated by the League of Municipalities. They would, they would prefer that the General, General Assembly incentivize local governments to do what they want with regard to creating results for affordable housing and workforce housing, instead of, you know, doing, using the preemption approach. Of course, most of these are preemptive instead.
Do, do we know if, on the affordable housing efforts, if the money follows the person? In other words, is there a tax credit for an individual? Is there a voucher-like system? Or is it something where governments actually go in the housing business?
I'm, I'm. The one that, on the actual incentive bill?
Yeah.
It, it's been a few days since I read that one, but my recollection is that it, it creates funding for grants to local government to, to offset the cost for utilities, infrastructure improvements that accommodate.
Money.
As long as those things are done to, to accommodate.
Person.
Development that is considered workforce housing.
What, what I was wondering is if, as, that if the individual, be it a firefighter, a law enforcement officer, teacher's nurse, et cetera, if there's not a, a way under the bill to provide them with a voucher to offset whatever housing they choose, so that the, the government really just serves as a pass-through for the money, and it goes in the hands of the, the needy, the needed individual who wants to make a rent payment where they otherwise couldn't afford it, rather than.
I suspect that that approach is contrary to the way that our General Assembly looks at the world.
Well, it's similar to a voucher for education for schools. It goes with the student, it goes with the person with the need, and then they go school shopping, or in this case, house shopping.
I think, I think in their eyes, it will look, it looks more like welfare.
Okay. I don't know.
And, and, you know, there might be people that are reluctant to accept that.
I'm not endorsing, I just, I'm, I'm looking at it as an, an option to.
But it, no, none of these, none of these bills take that approach.
Right, okay. Is there, has the League, the North Carolina League of Municipalities, have they taken a position on any bill in particular yet? Pro or con?
Well, Jeff had one conversation, I don't think they took a position, but they.
Just, just the general observation that they, they have, they are advocating for the General Assembly to take a, I'm sorry?
Take an incentive approach.
Incentive approach rather than a preemption approach.
Okay.
But they recognize that there is bipartisan support for many aspects of what you're seeing here. And they expect that the General Assembly is going to take some action on some subset of these bills.
I think it's interesting that Senate Bill 667, you have to, you have to be a lodging operator in order to benefit from it. And a lodging operator is a person who rents short-term rental to an occupant by using a short-term rental marketplace, which is a platform. So this is, this is for Airbnb renters.
Yeah. I'm not surprised that they, you know, they lobby quite effectively at the legislature, so they've written it, I'm sure they wrote this.
For themselves.
Yeah.
Yep, there you go.
667, yeah.
Look down to the definition section you see right away.
Is that on the back, back page, Jane, or the front page?
Well, it's three pages, and it's, I think it starts at the bottom of the second page, the definitions.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Definitions?
Well, first, there's a definition of it, Jeff, number, and then.
Lodging operator, I think you just had it.
See up there where it says, uh, short-term marketplace? Short-term rental marketplace. That's the limit. Now, if you scroll down to.
So if you.
Go all the way to the end, they'll get, they'll, they'll use that same reference. But I'm not, Jane, I'm not sure that the way you're interpreting it is.
Right, well.
Right there, lodging operator.
Correct.
We'll see, but anyway, it, it, it looks like it's, it's a.
That's using the short-term rental marketplace, so it could be an independent, independent owner or.
Yeah, but they, they still can't be, you know, just.
I don't think it's Airbnb's, I think it's actual property owners or who they hired to manage it.
Anyway, I just thought it was interesting.
Are we going to follow all these things? Let's set up a manner to do this. All right, are there any questions for Jeff or any other comments on these bills? All right, any other business for the work session? Anything, Jeff Morgan, you wanted to comment on at work session tonight or add for a future meeting?
No, thank you.
Okay, Jane? Pat?
No.
Nothing more for tonight or future meeting? Okay, we've got a full book. That brings us to the end of the work session agenda. All agreed on that? Is there a motion to adjourn the work session, please?
I moved to adjourn the work session.
Motion by Pat Pizzella.
Second.
Second by Jane Hoagman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Our meetings are concluded.
Take it. Yep.
Take care. My daughter is hopefully going to give birth here in the next couple hours.
Well, we're thinking of you.
Hope all goes well.
Yep.
Bye-bye.